Secretary, please call the role.
Ms. Bowman.
Ms. Como.
Dr. Cooperstol.
Dr. Jimenez.
Here.
Ms. Leahy.
Mr. Lee.
Mr. Corburg.
Mr. Spivey.
Quorum of the Board of Education is present, so the regularly scheduled meeting of September 2020-21 is called to order. We recognize that the Hogan Administrative Center occupies the land of the Ho'uchunk people. Please take a moment to celebrate and honor this ancestral Ho'uchunk land and the sacred lands of all indigenous peoples. We will now have the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand and face the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight's agenda has been previously distributed to the board with a motion by Mr. Corburg and a second by Mr. Abraham. We will move to approve the agenda as submitted unless there is a motion to amend. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. And all those opposed. Motion has carried. We will move on to our public speakers. And so, our first speaker, I believe, is Carrie Jones? Is Carrie here? I'm going to read a statement. So, where is our statement here? "It is the policy of the Board to provide at its public meetings an opportunity for individuals to address the Board. Comments about individual staff and personnel will not be allowed. Open meeting law prohibits the Board from engaging in discussion or responding to matters not included on the agenda. All speakers are reminded that this same policy limits your time to speak to five minutes, and this limit will be strictly enforced. And I will have the superintendent keep track of the time and notify the speaker when time is running out. And you are also asked to give your name and the school district where you reside at the beginning of your time for the public record." And I'll turn it over to you.
Does the time start after I give my name?
Yes.
Okay. So, my name is Carrie Jones, and I live in the La Crosse School District. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm here as a concerned parent. Right now, a lot of changes are being made at our schools with very little, if any, parental or community input. And while I know that there is a lot of pressure to keep the staff and the students safe and enact COVID mitigation measures, it's important that during these difficult and challenging times, we still live up to our principles. The concern that I'm here tonight to address is a newly adopted quarantine procedure. This new procedure concerns me because it is unfair, divisive, and violates our mission statement. The new quarantine procedure states that in the case of a close contact to a COVID-positive person, vaccinated individuals who do not develop symptoms do not need to quarantine. Yet, under the same circumstances, an unvaccinated student would need to quarantine. This is not a fair policy. The first issue with this procedure is that at this time, we now know that fully vaccinated people can have COVID-19, they can spread COVID-19, and they can do this while having no symptoms. These are the scientific facts. Denying in-person learning and access to activities for the unvaccinated while allowing vaccinated students to attend under the exact same circumstances is, in fact, a form of discrimination. The second issue with this procedure is that the school is not following their own guidance. When I asked about this quarantine procedure, I was told that the school district was following CDC guidance, and I was given a link to a CDC.gov site. I will read you the section concerning quarantine. Quote, "People who are fully vaccinated do not need to quarantine after contact with someone who had COVID-19 unless they have symptoms. However, fully vaccinated people should be tested three to five days after their exposure, even if they don't have symptoms." The school's quarantine policy says nothing about testing these vaccinated students after an exposure. If our school is going to follow the CDC guidance for quarantine, then why are we only following certain parts of this guidance and not all of the guidance? The third issue with this new procedure is that it is inequitable, discriminatory, and punitive in its nature. It violates our district's mission statement. Let me read you parts of that statement. Quote, "The Board of Education is comprised of locally elected officials who establish policies to ensure quality, equitable, and innovative educational opportunities for all students, ensure accountability to the public, and lastly, ensure effective communication and collaboration with the community. This quarantine procedure is discriminatory. If the school wants to keep our students and our faculty safe, then you can enact quarantine procedures that apply to all of the staff and students equitably. If someone has contact with a positive case, then quarantine them. Do not single out our unvaccinated students and deny them access to in-person learning when we know that the fully vaccinated can spread COVID-19. This policy could be seen as a first step in punishing and separating our vaccinated students from the unvaccinated. Another issue here is you are failing to follow your own mission statement. The first bulletin point of the mission statement is to provide equitable opportunities for all students. Let's do that by making equitable quarantine policies and other policies in general. We cannot start dividing and segregating our students based off their vaccine status. The final bulletin point of your mission statement is to ensure communication with the community. I have seen a breakdown of communication. There was no, a little parental nor community input in any of this. And we now have a local board that is being run by federal mandates and agencies. And it would be nice if this school district would prioritize the communication and collaboration with the community and live up to the standards it has created for itself. So, I am here today to remind you all of the district's mission statement and to hold you accountable. Thank you."
Thank you very much. And I apologize that we started late, but thank you for being here. Our next speaker is Amber West.
Good evening. My name is Amber West. I live in the La Crosse School District. I'm a youth organizer for Leaders Igniting Transformation, also known as Lit, a local nonprofit new to the La Crosse area. I'm here to ask you to invest funds in the budget towards restorative practices for our students. When asking students what they think their schools are lacking, I'm always provided with many different answers. However, a common theme is a noticed lack of care towards students' mental health. This pandemic has taken a toll on students, specifically our students of color. We need to invest more in holistic mental health practices at our local schools. This can be done by hiring more licensed professionals like counselors, psychologists, mental health professionals like that, for both students and faculty. We need healthy teachers, and their mental health matters, too. Additionally, our school board needs to invest in culturally responsive training for faculty and staff. This doesn't just mean hiring faculty and staff of color, but extensive diversity and anti-bias and anti-racist training for school faculty. Investing can also look like changes in racist policies and dress codes. It can also look like choosing a diverse and inclusive curriculum. Restorative justice training should be provided for all school faculty and staff so that everyone understands what restorative justice work and practice looks like. Again, we ask the school board to continue to divest from harmful practices like suspensions and expulsions and the Student Resource Officer Program that has over $100,000 allocated to it, and invest in more restorative practices like licensed professionals, like psychologists, counselors, and social workers, creating an inclusive school code, inclusive curriculums, and restorative practice training for school staff. Thank you."
Thank you. And again, I apologize that we started late, so I appreciate your patience with us. We will move on to the superintendent's consent agenda.
I'm making a motion to approve the items on the board consent agenda as presented.
With a motion by Mr. Corburg and a second by Ms. Como, we will move to approve the consent agenda, which is a mechanism used by the board to deal with routine business that must come before the body. Any discussion on this before we take a vote? Hearing none? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. And all those opposed? Motion has carried. We will move on to the board consent agenda. With a motion by Mr. Corburg and a second by Ms. Como, we will move to approve the consent agenda, which is a mechanism used by the board to deal with routine business that must come before the body. Any discussion on this before we take a vote? Hearing none? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. And all those opposed? Motion has carried. And we'll move on to the approval of the board consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the items on the board consent agenda as presented.
With a motion by Mr. Corburg and a second by Ms. Como, we will move to approve the consent agenda, which is a mechanism used by the board to deal with routine business that must come before the body. Any discussion on this before we take a vote? Hearing none? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. And all those opposed? Motion has carried. And we'll move on to the approval of the board consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the items on the board consent agenda as presented.
With a motion by Mr. Corburg and a second by Ms. Como, we will move to approve the consent agenda, which is a mechanism used by the board to deal with routine business that must come before the body. Any discussion on this before we take a vote? Hearing none? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. And all those opposed? Motion has carried. And we'll move on to the Kuli Region Virtual Academy Agreement 66.0301.
I'll make a motion to approve the intergovernmental cooperative, or excuse me, intergovernmental cooperation agreement for the Kuli Region Virtual Academy Consortium as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
With a motion by Mr. Corburg and a second by Ms. Como, we will move to approve the consent agenda, which is a mechanism used by the board to deal with routine business that must come before the body. Any discussion on this before we take a vote? Hearing none? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. And all those opposed? Motion has carried. And we'll move on to the approval of the board consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the items on the board consent agenda as presented.
With a motion by Mr. Corburg and a second by Ms. Como, we will move to approve the consent agenda, which is a mechanism used by the board to deal with routine business that must come before the body. Any discussion on this before we take a vote? Hearing none? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. And all those opposed? Motion has carried. And we'll move on to the Kuli Region Virtual Academy Agreement 66.0301.
I'll make a motion to approve the intergovernmental cooperative, or excuse me, intergovernmental cooperation agreement for the Kuli Region Virtual Academy Consortium as presented.
Is there a second? Good.
So, the CRB agreement, its connection to the school board, why it's brought here at this time, is that intergovernmental agreements under State Statute 660301 must be approved by school boards. It relates to the use of common
Tonight's agenda has been previously distributed to the board with a motion by Mr. Corburg and a second by Mr. Abraham. We will move to approve the agenda as submitted unless there is a motion to amend. Okay. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all those opposed. Motion has carried. We will move on to our public speakers. And so, um, our first speaker, I believe, is Carrie Jones. Is Carrie here? I'm gonna read a statement. So, uh, where is our statement here? "It is the policy of the board to provide at its public meetings an opportunity for individuals to address the board. Comments about individual staff and personnel will not be allowed. Open meeting law prohibits the board from engaging in discussion or responding to matters not included on the agenda. All speakers are reminded that this same policy limits your time to speak to five minutes, and this limit will be strictly enforced. And I will have the superintendent keep track of the time and notify the speaker when time is running out. And you are also asked to give your name and the school district where you reside at the beginning of your time for the public record." And I'll turn it over to you.
Uh, does the time start after I give my name?
Yes.
Okay. So, my name is Carrie Jones, and I live in the La Crosse School District. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm here as a concerned parent. Right now, a lot of changes are being made at our schools with very little, if any, parental or community input. And while I know that there's a lot of pressure to, um, keep the staff and the students safe and enact COVID mitigation measures, it's important that during these difficult and challenging times, we still live up to our principles. The concern that I'm here tonight to address is a newly adopted quarantine procedure. This new procedure concerns me because it is unfair, divisive, and violates our mission statement. The new quarantine procedure states that in the case of a close contact to a COVID-positive person, vaccinated individuals who do not develop symptoms do not need to quarantine. Yet, under the same circumstances, an unvaccinated student would need to quarantine. This is not a fair policy. The first issue with this procedure is that at this time, we now know that fully vaccinated people can have COVID-19, they can spread COVID-19, and they can do this while having no symptoms. These are the scientific facts. Denying in-person learning and access to activities for the unvaccinated while allowing vaccinated students to attend under the exact same circumstances is, in fact, a form of discrimination. The second issue with this procedure is that the school is not following their own guidance. When I asked about this quarantine procedure, I was told that the school district was following CDC guidance, and I was given a link to a CDC.gov site. I will read you the section concerning quarantine. Quote, "People who are fully vaccinated do not need to quarantine after contact with someone who had COVID-19 unless they have symptoms. However, fully vaccinated people should be tested three to five days after their exposure, even if they don't have symptoms. The school's quarantine policy says nothing about testing these vaccinated students after an exposure. If our school is going to follow the CDC guidance for quarantine, then why are we only following certain parts of this guidance and not all of the guidance? The third issue with this new procedure is that it is inequitable, discriminatory, and punitive in its nature. It violates our district's mission statement. Let me read you parts of that statement. Quote, "The Board of Education is comprised of locally elected officials who establish policies to ensure quality, equitable, and innovative educational opportunities for all students, ensure accountability to the public, and lastly, ensure effective communication and collaboration with the community. This quarantine procedure is discriminatory. If the school wants to keep our students and our faculty safe, then you can enact quarantine procedures that apply to all of the staff and students equitably. If someone has contact with a positive case, then quarantine them. Do not single out our unvaccinated students and deny them access to in-person learning when we know that the fully vaccinated can spread COVID-19. This policy could be seen as a first step in punishing and separating our vaccinated students from the unvaccinated. Another issue here is you are failing to follow your own mission statement. The first bulletin point of the mission statement is to provide equitable opportunities for all students. Let's do that by making equitable quarantine policies and other policies in general. We cannot start dividing and segregating our students based off their vaccine status. The final bulletin point of your mission statement is to ensure communication with the community. I have seen a breakdown of communication. There was no, a little parental nor community input in any of this. And we now have a local board that is being run by federal mandates and agencies. And it would be nice if this school district would prioritize the communication and collaboration with the community and live up to the standards it has created for itself. So, I am here today to remind you all of the district's mission statement and to hold you accountable. Thank you."
Thank you very much. And I apologize that we started late, but thank you for, for being here. Our next speaker is Amber West.
Um, good evening. My name is Amber West. I live in the La Crosse School District. I'm a youth organizer for Leaders Igniting Transformation, also known as Lit, a local nonprofit new to the La Crosse area. I'm here to ask you to invest funds in the budget towards restorative practices for our students. When student, when asking students what they think their schools are lacking, I'm always provided with many different answers. However, a common theme is a noticed lack of care towards students' mental health. This pandemic has taken a toll on students, specifically our students of color. We need to invest more in holistic mental health practices at our local schools. This can be done by hiring more licensed professionals like counselors, psychologists, mental health professionals like that, for both students and faculty. We need healthy teachers, and their mental health matters, too. Additionally, our school board needs to invest in culturally responsive training for faculty and staff. This doesn't just mean hiring faculty and staff of color, but extensive diversity and anti-bias and anti-racist training for school faculty. Investing can also look like changes in racist policies and dress codes. It can also look like choosing a diverse and inclusive curriculum. Restorative justice training should be provided for all school faculty and staff so that everyone understands what restorative justice work and practice looks like. Again, we ask the school board to continue to divest from harmful practices like suspensions and expulsions and the Student Resource Officer Program that has over $100,000 allocated to it, and invest in more restorative practices like licensed professionals, like psychologists, counselors, and social workers, creating an inclusive school code, inclusive curriculums, and restorative practice training for school staff. Thank you."
Thank you. And again, I apologize that we started late, so I appreciate your patience with us. We will move on to the superintendent's consent agenda.
Superintendent's consent agenda as presented.
With a motion by Mr. Corburg and seconded by Ms. Como, uh, we will move to approve the consent agenda, which is a mechanism used by the board to deal with routine business that must come before the body. Any discussion on this before we take a vote? Hearing none? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion has carried. And we'll move on to the approval of the board consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the items on the board consent agenda as presented.
With a motion by Mr. Corburg and a second by Ms. Como, the items on the board consent agenda will be approved. Is there any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all those opposed? Motion has carried. We'll move on to the Cooley Region Virtual Academy Agreement 66.0301.
I'll make, I'll make a motion to, so I said, I'll make a motion to approve the, yeah, intergovernmental cooperative, or excuse me, intergovernmental cooperation agreement for the Cooley Region Virtual Academy Consortium as presented.
Is there a second? So...
So, the CRVA agreement, um, its connection to the school board, why it's brought here at this time, is that intergovernmental agreements under state statute 660301 must be approved by school boards. Uh, it relates to the use of common, um, monies that transfer back and forth for services. The contact of this is our CRVA agreement this year consists of providing access to curriculum, access to the Wisconsin eSchool eNetwork, and some administrative services. The other districts this year are supplying their own teachers and local administration. So, it's really a very simple agreement this year. They're gonna teach their own students. We're gonna provide access to curriculum. Uh, any students that we use our teachers, um, this year must open it into our school district, which some have done. So, we built out the enrollment for that, um, academy. And I'd ask, um, Pat, do you remember what the enrollment is? Was it like one? Yeah. 110 to 120.
Dr. Lahaki? Yes, that's not right.
So, 120 students enrolled in the Cooley Regional Academy, including a number of students from other local districts, as well as students that had previously enrolled out of the school district and are now enrolled back in the school district for online experience. The most important thing to this is the agreement between the local school districts that we forward last year to share services and curriculum. The goal in creation that I did last year was to avoid cannibalizing each other during a pandemic, so that we could keep our own students, be successful, and not have to compete heavily. What's the future of the CRVA? We'll always have a charter school, most likely, but other schools will probably kind of fade out as they find less of a need for online virtual education, and I imagine we'll pick up a few of those kids over the years, uh, which will be to our benefit. So, that's why it comes forward to you. Any questions?
So, you mentioned that the other districts are providing their personnel. We're, we're providing the curriculum?
That's correct.
Or access to curriculum?
Access to curriculum, yep.
Um, that does not necessarily mean the student has to enroll in our district, right?
No.
So, are the other school districts paying for the curriculum that we're offering?
Yes. That's, a large part of the agreement is what is the cost for that curriculum? That curriculum costs us some money, plus we have the administrative aspects of connecting them to the eSchools network, so there's an administrative charge that comes with that as well. We're not losing money on this deal. Our goal is not to become profitable by it either, but simply to get through this year in collaboration with our neighbors. The Cooley Region Virtual Academy, our charter school, will be the long-term, you know, addition to our school district that brings in students from around the region.
Other questions?
I am curious to hear about the pros and cons of having CRVA. From a parent's standpoint or from students, what have you been hearing, the good, the bad? Is it worth it? Should we be continuing?
Yeah, I'll have Dr. Lahaki maybe weigh in on some anecdotes. One of the things that we know from last year is we had about 600 students try out virtual school. And we only have about 110, 120 doing it this year. So, not every parent loves virtual school. It does not work for every kid, but there is a handful that do. And Dr. Lahaki can probably explain some of the, the things he's heard from parents about pros and cons.
Can I just take on, is this different than eScholars as well?
Sure. And I can add in that answer as well. So, definition, so eScholars occurs at La, La Crosse Polytechnic, Logan, and Central, and is a part-time program. So, if a student is enrolled in Logan, perhaps they want to take one, two, three online courses, um, they're able to do that, and that's called eScholars. Those courses are sometimes taught by our own teachers. Sometimes we use the state network, uh, for that. CRVA is different in that it's 100% virtual. So, that's the main difference between eScholars and CRVA. There are no part-time online students in the CRVA. Everyone's 100% virtual. Now, the curriculum is the same between eScholars and the Cooley Region Virtual Academy. It comes from the same place. There's a number of, uh, national vendors, and we contract, the Wisconsin eSchool Network contracts with a number of them to offer hundreds of courses to our students with the curriculum. Now, we still have to find teachers around the state. Most often, it's our own teachers using that curriculum that's already been made online. But sometimes we do have teachers from Appleton, and sometimes students from Appleton are taught by students in La Crosse. That's one of the advantages of being in the network. The, uh, MOU allows us to help our neighboring districts connect to that network we've been a part of since 2013. So, Dr. Engel's correct. Let, let's be honest. In-person education works for most students, but not all. We're the school district of choice. This is a choice for students within our district primarily. Uh, if other people want to join, great. We're able to do that. It's virtual, so we have a student from Barron, Wisconsin, all across the state. Uh, we do have students that are joining us now. Uh, we have a pretty successful brand name across the state, and I anticipate that will only grow. Uh, I don't know if our partner's long-term, uh, if online learning will be in their futures, but it will be in ours, and I would anticipate that we will receive some of those students as well. Uh, what people like about the CRVA, I would say, is the flexibility. The, the phrase we always use is, "Time is the variable, learning is the constant." So, students, they can learn Sunday night. Sometimes we get assignments in at 3:00 a.m. Uh, it's the student's schedule, but the learning and the curriculum, um, are, are, are steady. Um, sometimes we have our students appreciate that they can take a break from a particular course for two weeks at a time and concentrate on a different course altogether. There's a pacing plan that goes with the curriculum that allows us to monitor progress so students don't fall so far behind. But if they do want to concentrate on like a calculus course, they're able to do that, um, move ahead in that course, and then move back to another course. That's the advantage. We here over in Oregon, thank you for the flexibility in the time. We do offer, I think, a unique blend, almost a hybrid compared to other state programs, in that we do have a mix of synchronicity. Uh, the younger you are, the more teacher connectivity throughout the day than you have, whereas when you get into the high school, it's a mostly self-paced experience. Um, that blend is also flexible. So, if you are successful, if you're a fourth grader and you are successful, you don't always have to attend those live teaching times because you're demonstrating your proficiency, um, through the, uh, curriculum. So, that's what people like about it. What they don't like about it is generally, "I want to be at school." Right? And, and so, uh, you know, post-COVID, if we start to think about that, that social, emotional aspect, that's where I think the CRVA needs to grow the most. To be able to come together on Friday and say, "Hey, we're going to meet at Myrick Park," um, to build a community with our, within our classroom, that's really hard to do in a virtual setting. And so, long-term, I think that's what we'll be able to do more so for our local students than we can right now. But that's a critique, I would say.
So, are any of the, uh, virtual academy students in extracurriculars at all?
Yes, so they can be in extracurriculars, just like students at La Crosse Polytechnic, based on where their boundary is.
Do we know if they are?
Yeah, yes. Some are. One of the big additions we made this year is access to music. Uh, so there is, uh, not only just taking that, um, uh, last year we offered like, uh, instrument progression is what we called it. So, you could have individualized lesson. We do them over Zoom. This year is the opportunity to actually participate in some of the music, uh, courses. So, that's a nice add, um, from this year, and we'll keep trying to grow, uh, some of those options going forward, too.
Thank you.
Other questions? Yes, three.
What's the general breakdown of the ages of the students or the grade levels?
Sure. Generally speaking, uh, we have a pretty, it, so it's mostly high school. I would say, mm, 40, 45% of our students are high school-aged. Uh, kindergarten, we probably only have one or two, maybe three students. Uh, and then, I would say we had maybe 40 elementary, 25 middle, 40 high school. So, give or, give or take. Those are rough numbers.
Other questions?
Our heaviest grades are like fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth, I would say, enrollment-wise.
Thank you, Dr. Lahaki. All right, well, with no other questions, we will move forward with a vote to approve the intergovernmental cooperation agreement for the Cooley Region Virtual Academy Consortium as presented, which was moved by Mr. Corburg and seconded by Ms. Como, I believe. All those in favor of approval, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion has carried, and we will move on to our information item, and this is talking about the Operational Expectation Monitoring Report, OE 11 instructional program.
Yeah, the reason this is before the board is this is the core of what we do, which is, uh, monitoring our board policies and our board monitoring reports. Um, Dr. Harsy has spent innumerable hours, uh, putting together this policy, and so he will walk us through its various components and how, uh, we meet the school boards in time.
Yeah, thank you. So, uh, while I get to be the mouthpiece for this particular policy, there's a lot of folks, including Dr. Engel, and a lot of folks from the Instructional Resource Team who are in the office, or in the audience today, and, uh, somebody who's not here, um, and Kristi Arns, who is instrumental in, in pulling a lot of these pieces. And frankly, a lot of these pieces, the Board of Education gets to see, uh, throughout the year. So, if you had a chance from its posting last Thursday, uh, throughout the weekend to, to click on some of these links, they might be somewhat familiar to you. So, uh, but having said all that, uh, this is, of all of the OEs that the Board of Education will see, this is by far the most robust. And so, I'm gonna slow-walk this a little bit, and so it can be as conversational as we'd like it to be, uh, because as Dr. Engel pointed out, this is really kind of the heartbeat of the school district of La Crosse in many ways. And so, I want to make sure we take the time to, uh, you know, dive into all these aspects. Uh, to talk a little bit about how robust this particular OE is, while there are 12 sub-OEs to this, there are 37 measures. There are 70 attachments with countless kind of sub-attachments buried within, for example, some of the scope and sequence documents, et cetera. So, uh, it is, for the, for the library, you know, the board libraries, we get to that, it's gonna be something that's a resource document going forward, certainly. Um, of the 37 measures, uh, there are going to be two that we've identified anyway, that we do not quite measure of, that are in need of improvement. Uh, one of them being OE 11.5 indicated two. Uh, that is, 95% of secondary students completing an academic and career-reliant ACP plan. Uh, we establish a benchmark of 95%, and that's based on federal test participation rate, and based on our data, we did not reach that. And we'll talk more about that in just a little bit. And then, in terms of OE 11.9 indicated three proportional enrollment in our choice of charter schools, and based on our students' data demographic, and based on certain schools and certain demographics, uh, we again are not meeting that, that standard. Uh, I'll tell the board that we're working on both of those, and I can, you know, share more of these with you in a little second or three. And then, uh, this last paragraph here, future modifications to measures and indicators as the board, as we, you know, look at future iterations of this report, just know that we are taking notes as to how we would maybe change a measure, the, the language, the wording. So, we'll have suggestions, you know, from the administrative team going forward. So, what does OE 11, um, these operational expectations monitor? So, we're looking at everything from educational best practices to our standards, and making sure that the curriculum aligns with those standards. We're measuring students' progress, of course. We want to make sure that students have a lot of opportunities, uh, to show that they're, what they're interested in and what they can excel at. Uh, we want to make sure that we're accommodating, accommodating different learning preferences. Uh, we want to make sure, under number seven, that we're ensuring that the instructional program utilizes a social justice lens, and it's culturally responsive and competent. Number eight, that we're regularly evaluating our instructional programs, that we're considering class-size composition and organization as important components of the academic program, that we're adequately, adequately monitoring students' access to and utilization of electronic information, that we're protecting instructional time. Kids get awful busy. We want to make sure that we're protecting that instructional time throughout the academic day. And then finally, periodically reviewing and presenting for the board approval any school attendance boundary changes to ensure reasonable balance in student enrollment. So, over the course of the next, you know, even if I went and took a deep breath in auctioneer style, we're gonna be here for just a little bit. So, um, let's dig in a little bit to each of these. So, under OE 11.1, uh, the superintendent ensures instructional programs are based on comprehensive and objective review of best practices. Uh, when we look at indicator one, 100% of content in program areas sched, are scheduled on the, uh, curriculum review cycle, are on appropriate evaluation pace. The evidence that we included here, so we have a teaching and learning committee, it's chaired by our own Dr. Lahaki here, ensures that all program areas are on a review cycle. And what we've linked here below are the meeting dates, uh, that the teaching and learning committee meets. And then also, um, our La Crosse curriculum review plan, so that review cycle is there is a link as well. And indicator two, 100% of the changes and improvements, and we can link really indicator two and three, uh, ones for elementary, ones for secondary, but 100% of the changes, improvements, and modifications made to the elementary schools' instructional programs are based on a review of best practices. And I will tell you, as a result of the pandemic, it was primarily the how, uh, you know, with the virtual instruction more so than the what, uh, curriculum, uh, content over this last year. That said, um, high-quality universal instruction is always a focal point for us. So, under both of those as examples, we have universal best practices. And under indicator two, we added, uh, a year-long, a first-grade scope and sequence example, and then under indicator three, a secondary book review example. Any questions under 11.1? Under 11.2, the superintendent will base instruction on district academic standards that meet or exceed and, uh, uh, the state and/or national-recognized model standards. So, in indicator one, 100% of state standards are reflected in reading, writing, and math curriculum. And so, what we did there is we linked, uh, several examples of standards for both elementary and secondary mathematics and English language arts, which our board, I think Dr. Lahaki actually, maybe mid or early June, came through with an initial, um, example, a report, and then we adopt, I think it's after the first meeting in July, uh, the board has a chance to adopt those. Indicator two, 100% of the state science standards are reflected in the science curriculum. And again, uh, those are linked below. And then finally, uh, 100% of the curriculum for all subjects not listed above are aligned to Wisconsin state standards and/or vetted national standards. And what we supplied as evidence there, uh, essentially was Dr. Lahaki and I got together, and we said, "Let's make sure, let's review and, uh, make sure all of those are indeed aligned," and they, and they are. Questions on 11.2 with alignment of our standards?
I have one question.
Ms. Como?
These are our state and, and federal standards, and indicator three is in regards to everything that's not listed above, and that's a letter from the Associate Superintendent of an Instruction, but it doesn't really list out what standards those are. So, like, per se, Act 31, which we just had a, a linkage, you know, that it was a very hot topic, is there a place where we're calling that out? Just in this, i, am I looking at the wrong place? Because I would think that would be where it would fit. Here's your standards, here's your reading, writing, math, here's your science. This is all other.
What we did under the definition of terms just above that, we just put some of the examples, American Council for Teaching of Foreign Languages, uh, standards developed in, read of by national standards, the Project Lead the Way standards. We didn't list them all, but those would be, they would fall under that category. We certainly can add examples. We've got a...
I think it would be a good idea just to make sure that we are all-inclusive, to make sure we know that we are meeting the standards that our public is expecting.
I agree.
Certainly.
Not today, but of course, for the next time.
Sir, well, the beauty of this conversation, hopefully it's conversational, is, is that October 4th, we bring this back.
Yes.
You know, we want the board's input so that we can kind of hone and polish it. So, on the 4th, you feel really comfortable about where it's at.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Other questions?
In 11.3, once we have those standards, of course, we build our curriculum locally off of the standards. And so, in 11.3, indicator one, an articulated curriculum based on standards is developed for each of our classes or courses, following a review by the curriculum review team. You'll notice that we've, we, the curriculum review team and the, the teaching and learning council are synonymous. We actually have, we're kind of sunsetting one term and bringing the teaching and learning council term onboard with our, with our content area coordinators. Uh, so, um, the problem we had was that we adopted the, the indicators. At one point, we didn't want to change those in the mid-course, so... Uh, but the evidence that we, we had here is that, um, um, our stance-based curriculum is developed through this yearly process, and we put... And we put in a sixth-grade English language arts example for the board to take a look at. And then any new course is vetted through the curriculum team process. And the course proposal form is there as well. And then in indicator two, 100% of our curricula are collaboratively developed through curriculum committees. And obviously, the input of multiple voices is an important process. So we just used a couple of examples there. A curriculum that's been getting a lot of rewrite work over the last few years of social studies. And there's some stakeholder groups there. And then the Teaching Learning Committee meeting minutes are included as well. Again, that Teaching Learning Committee, that is the curriculum team. Questions on 11.3?
Any questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
So with that, do you seek information from community groups for that social studies, for example? Or is it limited just to like the K through 12 staff with specialty in those areas?
Yeah, no. So I'm kind of working on a hard copy. But that link with the social studies stakeholder group has outside voices included.
Okay.
Yep. Great question.
Dan Dan?
I know with the LGV2 group, there's only one person. Is there not other people part of that group or?
Sometimes it's just trying to get as much participation as possible. That may have been the only individual who was able to participate.
Other comments? If you can go ahead.
Thank you for those questions. 11.4. A superintendent is going to need to effectively measure students' progress towards the goal on those standards. And we're looking for continuous improvement, obviously, from, from our student body. So in indicator one, schools use district and state assessments to track student progress and identify areas for universal curriculum improvement. And so for evidence, we attached middle school and elementary data analysis examples. School data teams then will take, and I apologize for the size, how small, for example, each of these are. But the Wisconsin, there's one, the first example, the first link, it was a Wisconsin forward analysis of a sixth-grade math example. And so in there, you can see like depth of, we break it down by depth of knowledge. And then you can see the, the types of questions that were asked, the success rate, et cetera. And then the second one is another form. It's a Wisconsin forward heat map. I think that's third-grade math. And then we have our elementary assessment timeline included as well. In indicator two, we don't take a federal, you know, test, for example. And a great conversation with Dr. Lahucke about this, really, it's the Wisconsin forward assessment data that populates that federal report card. And so while it doesn't really impact curriculum, it does give us other really valuable information. For example, if we're disproportionate in special education areas, for example. So the federal report card has its, its place and its purpose, but it doesn't necessarily directly influence curriculum. So this would be an area, you know, if we were to have an, you know, iterative process later down, we might take a look at indicator two and maybe tweak what we're looking for out of that indicator with a rewrite. In indicator three, schools use universal screening and progress monitoring assessments to identify students who may require additional support. The evidence that we use here, we kind of go from the more global, like our, you know, here are all of our assessment, again, the assessment inventory. And then we start breaking it down from tier two to tier three, and then an S and T process. We're getting more into an individual student need level. And when we get to 11.8 indicator two, you'll see something more specific on a student's actual utilization of a tier-three intervention. And then indicator four, schools develop and maintain data systems to track and monitor student progress in common assessments. There's two links there. And I think Kelly Schmitz, our supervisor of educator readiness, she's actually the voice on one of these videos. But the two links, there's one a video and one a PowerPoint, provides overviews to our data platform for monitoring and analyzing student progress, both academically and behaviorally. And we're pretty excited, actually, about EduClimer and what that's going to do for, you know, quick, easy analysis of student data for our district. Any questions on 11.4?
So is that new? I'm sorry.
It is fairly new. Yeah. For example, we had, we're training our student success coaches just here a few weeks ago. And there, there's quite a bit of excitement, actually, around it's ease of use, it's very user-friendly, and what we're going to hopefully be able to do for students, quick turnaround time.
Thanks.
Yep.
Are there questions?
Question. So in indicator three, did you notice like the same rate of interventions offered over the times when students were virtual only? Or like, how did COVID impact the ability to do these, you know, tier-two and tier-three interventions for students?
You know, I would have to go ask that question. I'm not sure that I know the answer to. And the question is, like, what tier-two, tier-three interventions, what was the impact during COVID versus?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd have to do a little digging, actually.
Okay.
Now, having said that, we may, we may have an answer. Shelley, do you have an idea with tier-two, tier-three?
Well, students did participate in tier-two and tier-three. So tier-two was typically led by the classroom teacher. So with our virtual instruction plan, they did most of their universal in the morning. Afternoon was specials, but then also during that time was when our classroom teachers were pulling small groups virtually to provide tier-two interventions. And then for our students that got received tier-three interventions, our title teachers or other interventions, there's sometimes even a classroom teacher who are pulling them individually. Because a tier-two, or excuse me, a tier-three intervention is one of three students with, and so then they manipulated that to make sure we get fidelity to that intervention. And so they worked to ensure that we could have fidelity to a particular intervention in a virtual setting. So lots of it going on.
Yeah, the fidelity piece is really important because sometimes tier-three leads into a special education evaluation. So we had to have fidelity to what we did in a virtual setting. We had to create a lot of protocols that, that were pretty intensive to make sure that we were getting the data that we needed to make the instructional decisions for students that we could. But your question is, overall, there were less tier-three that were done compared to the previous year?
Probably the same, so it would have been less tier-two. There's so much, the tier-two can also take place organically. And so a student, teacher notices something, and so they pull them aside. And they might pull them aside and work with them for a week, or a few days, or flex the groups. So that did not happen as seamlessly as it does face-to-face.
Which might seem a little counterintuitive, right? Because I mean, COVID was a major interruption to learning. So you might think, oh, the tier-two and tier-three, these must have skyrocketed. And we're hearing otherwise.
Can you double-check to make sure we have access to things like, I don't have access to the federal accountability card, but I do have access to the district federal accountability card. So can you just verify the access, please? Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Any comments or questions here?
I was just wondering, is the EduClimer, is that being used for all grade levels?
Yes. Yep. It's district-wide. All right, 11.5. A superintendent is going to ensure that instructional program includes opportunities for students to develop talents and interests in their specialized areas of interest. And so in 11.5 indicator one, course guides outlining academic opportunities. They're distributed and made available online to all students and families at the secondary school. So we just put an example there of a middle school and high school course guide. And then indicator two, we're going to, actually, indicator two, this is our first area we come to where, you know, we felt that we are not meeting the necessary measure here. So 95% of secondary students complete an academic, an ACP, academic and career plan. So as you'll know, in the attached data, we were unable to reach that 95% benchmark. So with the pandemic, no excuses, we were focused on some other things. And but the reality is, we, we feel like being face-to-face, we're going to be able to accomplish and reach that, that ACP goal that we were unable to meet when we were, you know, primarily virtual over the course of this last year. But again, the fact of the matter is, the data bears out that we didn't meet 95%. Any questions on that, on that indicator? Since it was, it is one that we put below. Okay. Indicator three, the district will provide opportunities for dual enrollment with post-secondary options. We've had, you know, two great reports, August 2nd, and August 17th. They're linked below, and they detail various opportunities for dual enrollment with post-secondary options for students. And that's the redefining ready that Dr. Lahucke provided. And then Ms. Everson and Ms. Rodering provided an early college credit, Start College Now, report for our post-secondaries here in Wisconsin, whether it's four-year or technical. That's 11.5. All right, 11.6.
I do have a question there. So there have been questions I have received about, help me understand what courses, why, why are some courses allowed to be taken, say, dual credit, where you can get credit at the university versus AP, right? So in an AP, in an AP class, you take a test. Doesn't matter if you pass the course or not. If you, if you don't pass that test, you don't get the college credit. So there's been questions about why can't we, my student take calculus, say, at UWL, even though there's an AP calculus course offered within the school district?
Yeah, so there's a lot of, you know, AP tests, if you score three, three or better, then you're going to be able to earn some credit. And some of this depends on the school. Again, the child is going to, student's going to attend. We have a lot of agreements, and we're trying to, to get more. We've been in some meetings with Dr. Engel and Ms. Everson and Dr. Lahucke earlier this year. We were working on, with, with collaboration, saying, we need to do better for our students. It's not unheard of to have students who can graduate with 10, 12, 16, 18 credits, you know, as they leave the district. So we aim to have more. We want students graduating. Now, this comes with a cost sometimes to the district, which is fine. I think we're all okay with spending that money, so long as we're setting students up. So Dr. Martinez, our goal is to have as many courses count as possible. And I think we're ready to roll up our sleeves and work with, we'd, we'd love to work with our partners locally, frankly. But we're also willing to work with whomever.
I would offer up that the law indicates that you have to have exhausted the offerings at school. So if we offer a course of study through AP calculus, then the law indicates that before you're eligible to take classes at the college, you need to exhaust what's there at school. And that's partly to protect the school districts from unnecessary costs. You know, if we were to allow students to substitute for anything on there, you know, it would quickly be overwhelm our budget in a way that was unsustainable. So that, that's part of the reason why, if we offer AP Calc, we don't allow you to take calculus at the university until you've taken AP Calc. And so I know that's disappointing for some families, but those are the rules that are in place.
Thank you. Are there questions on 11.5?
Just for clarification purposes, within this dataset, it might assume that 0% is because the numbers are too low to report as previous datasets have been set up?
Which one are we looking at, Mr. Spivey?
I'm looking at early college credit, Start College Now, the PDF. It's the document that's broken down by-
Let me hop it there and-
My assumption is that those are 0%, not because they're too small to report. The, the quantities listed in some of the other columns indicate one, two, five. You know, so this isn't a cell size issue. This is a, we don't have students in those groups taking these classes.
All right.
Anything else?
Yeah, I'm just popping it in. Dr. Engel's correct. Yep, that would be absolutely right. It's not a cell size. Okay, 11.6, marking the halfway point here. A superintendent will ensure that instructional programs accommodate the different learning preferences of our students. And so in indicator one, all students are placed in their least restrictive environment. 100% of IEPs will include least restrictive environment requirements. So the two pieces of evidence that we include here is our Special Education Board report and a letter from our supervisor of special education noting the district's universal least restrictive environment, IEP review and practices. An indicator two, a tiered service delivery model based on English proficiency exists for all of our English learners. And so we've got a few links here. Include our service delivery model, a guide that we utilize from the DPI handbook. And finally, an analysis of our local English learner student population by school and by tiered level. In indicator three, alternative to traditional classroom environments exist in school district La Crosse. One of them, you, we talked about just previous to this, that's, you know, Cooley Region Virtual Academy. And then the Integrated Supports Program Report is also linked, and those are just a couple of examples. In indicator four, successful completion of an action plan for developing the capacity of leaders and professional staff and culturally relevant practices. So Dr. Engel, of course, has, has presented for the board, March 1st, the Strategic Plan for Educational Equity. And what we are building around that, the scaffolding, is the staff development around that. So we linked our staff development report. This is the year past, but we're also, the language built into that is the plan going forward as well. And then our staff development schedule as well. Questions on 11.6? Okay, 11.7. Ensuring that the instructional program utilizes a social justice lens and is culturally responsive and competent. In indicator one, the district strategic plan, again, annually focuses on social justice and cultural competency. The staff development report, again, is there. And then administrative goals that specifically point out the effort. In indicator two, the district curriculum team uses a process for course and program development, which we highlighted previously in this document. So we have the course proposal form, and then we have one example in there of a program development form. We have school improvement plans, which we'll see in a bit. We also have program improvement plans. In indicator three, the district utilizes a process for new initiatives to be launched and reviewed based on equity foundations. In the school district La Crosse, we use something called implementation science. One of the things that we learn is, we don't want to just, you know, have some professional development or some implementation or initiative and, and hope that it works. We want to be more strategic than that. And so the implementation progression is there, and then community stakeholder meetings, we also included around that. 11.7, any questions there?
Any questions?
All right, 11.8. We regularly evaluate and modify all instructional programs as necessary to ensure their continuing effectiveness. In indicator one, all programs will annually identify instructional priorities. In the next report, in fact, you'll see the, what we call the short form in, in the budget book. And then the, the long form is linked here as well. In indicator two, the district analyzes improvements for students and academic interventions to determine the effectiveness of the intervention for that grade and student need. And so here, in the, the links below, you have a tier-three data report. Provides a snapshot example of academic intervention effectiveness tracking. And again, here's EduClimer example. Below that, you'll see, you know, tier-two and tier-three kind of examples. And then just some reference documents from DPI. Indicator three, each elementary school, and we can kind of, again, tie three, four, and five together here. But each elementary school will be in the category of meet state expectations using the criteria of student achievement, student growth, closing gaps, on-tracked post-secondary readiness, and absenteeism rates. Because of the time span that this report covers, you know, we did not have state testing in 2020 as a result of the pandemic. And the 2021 report cards have not yet been released. So we put in, categorize this as an NA for the next three. So we have an indicator three, elementary schools, indicator four, middle schools. And on the next area, indicator five, our high schools. In indicator six, all buildings participate in continuous improvement process and establish annual building- and establish annual building goals through their school improvement plans. So what we did here is we attached a link with a folder to the school improvement plans, which I will tell you are, you know, that, the kind of in, under construction tape should be across this. We just switched templates, so all the schools are in the process of switching from a, you know, the former template to the new, you know, five-year template. And they're going to be presenting their templates, actually starting this next month, to the district leadership team. And so there's a schedule in there, and then there's guiding questions that we ask the buildings. It's, it's more of an assist than anything, to help the building principals as they present to the district leadership team. Questions on eleven point eight?
I think one question I might have is, when I look at the instructional priorities for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, that document is an example. And I look at the reengage in schooling, and the first sentence talks about fully re-engaging in from COVID nineteen. Will strengthen our whole child approach by integrating social emotional learning, resilient trauma-informed teaching and mental health supports for our students. So what are, what are ways that we're ensuring that the interpretation of that by the different building administrators is consistent throughout the district?
Yeah, we have, we have positions in each building who are focusing on that very thing and making sure we're connecting our S E L. So even our speaker tonight, when they were talking about the importance of student and staff mental health, that's part of what our S E L work does. We have a social emotional learning team. And part of what they do is they try to provide that conduit or that nexus about district level messaging, making sure it filters into the building. And so that is part of what, we, we want to make sure we don't, it's great on paper, we want to translate it into the building. That's part of their work and their charge.
Thank you. Other questions?
In eleven point nine. Superintendent will consider class size composition and organization as important components of the academic program. And so in indicator one, financial resources are committed to better ensure reduced class sizes. We're fortunate that we are a district that qualifies for A G R, achievement gap reduction. From the state, part of that is because we've had instructional coaches and the student success coaches. And so that report is attached there as an example. An indicator two, systems and processes are created and implemented to preserve community and support neighborhood schools. Our district has demonstrated support for community and neighborhood schools, evidenced by a variety of unique projects. This board is familiar with the Hinch and Hummer work, our community schools, of course, and supported actually through district policy, and those links are there. In indicator three, again, with indicator three, I'd, I'd point out, this is where we come to the second indicator that we feel like we're in need of improvement. So based on our data, our choice and charter enrollments are not, they're not universally proportional. And so efforts, you know, are underway to include improvement here. And some of them, you've kind of detailed there, including marketing and advertising, greatly reduced paperwork, which can be a barrier for, for folks. Continue to improve transportation, what we mean by that, we, we've got, you know, a lot of transportation shuttles and hubs. And so we, we need to make that so it's less of a burden for families. And then really, what, what we've done with the attachment that you see there, it's the first time we've really identified a benchmark for our district for improvement. With that identified, we have an opportunity to improve. It's amazing when you don't have a goal necessarily in mind, you don't really know what you're shooting for. So in the attachment, we identify percentage plus and minus areas to say, okay, now we've got something we can, over time, go for. And hopefully that will make some difference in this area.
Questions?
Eleven, I'm sorry, was there, okay, sorry. Eleven point ten, adequately monitor and control student access to and utilization of electronically distributed information. And indicator one, a hundred percent of district-owned computers used within the district network are protected using reliable safety measures. The firewall security and content filter are CIPA compliant. And so safe and appropriate utilization of district-owned technology is obviously critical. Each of the evidence examples linked below emphasizes efforts and safety measures being utilized. And so we've got our director here tonight, appreciate that. He's authored a letter, and you can see some of the practices within the letter that he's authored. And then we've attached a couple of our policies, district administrative policies that we follow. An indicator two, identify prohibited sites and information attempted, attempted to be accessed by students are flagged and blocked by district filters. We use a program called Content Keeper, and you can see a couple of the examples there. And yeah, so you, I mean, I don't have to go into the in-depth there, but you can kind of take a look at.
Dr. Harcy, I would just, so with the, the, when they're flagged, if it's a concern about a student self-harm or something, that's followed up with by somebody, correct?
Absolutely, yep. The notification goes right into building adminis, key people in the building, in the building level, and they get to follow up immediately. And, and so what, what might seem like a, you know, there's some, some things that are certainly benign and some things that could, could turn out to be serious. And it's, I think, that rapid response time that has made a difference in, in some instances.
Thank you.
Eleven point eleven, superintendent will protect the instructional time provided for students during the academic day. Indicator one, disruptions to the academic day will be discouraged. So part of the evidence we shared there is, I think the first one there is actually maybe an email communication from me just indicating we have a dearth of subs, you know, that's no, no secret. But we tried to encourage folks that the best person for in-person instruction is that, that regular daily educator, and so we kind of encourage people to try to, and this is for district leadership as well, let's try not to pull people out of the classroom if we can help it. And then there's actually sections in the student code of rights and responsibilities and, and areas with student interviews by outside entities personnel that also tries to honor kind of the sanctity and purity of instructional time during the day. Indicator two, substitutes for school and/or district events will be monitored by district administration and building principals for alignment to strategic goals and actions. As part of the evidence narrative there, we, we kind of wrote, this is another one, we probably wordsmith a little bit. We wanted to say, we're not, we're not monitoring the substitutes. We're, we're monitoring how the substitutes are being utilized, the activity or the events, just to make sure it's, you know, aligns with mission and vision and goals. One of the, the second link there is from our director of human resources, Matt Winthe, indicating that effort. And in eleven point twelve, we periodically review and present for the board and approval from the board, any school attendance boundary changes to ensure reasonable balance in student enrollment. In the indicator one, annual enrollment review for each school, including school capacity analysis is provided to the board. And so for in the example, in the, in the budget plan, you give enrollment history and, and projections. And we, we annually have the open enrollment space, or the open enrollment space availability. And then an indicator two, when necessary, provide potential recommendations, potential recommendations, excuse me, and alternatives for student school attendance based on annual enrollment review and district enrollment projections. And so part of that evidence, you know, our district uses multiple data sets, include, you know, we've talked a lot about the U W Applied Population Lab because Dr. Engel's been very busy with the, the long-range facility plan work and the presentations. And so we've linked both the long-range facility planning information and the, and the facilities handout there as examples. And so the student enrollment has been obviously a topic of conversation. Questions on, on that last one?
Any questions either for the last few indicators or overall on O E eleven? Well, hearing none, can I just get a kind of a indication from the board if we are feeling comfortable with what the, what we indicated, what the administration indicated for each indicator about being in compliance or not being in compliance? Are there any concerns there?
I agree with the indicators that are marked on compliance and those that have further work to be done.
Yes, okay. Hearing nothing else, thank you very much for the detailed report on O E eleven, I appreciate it. We'll move on to results monitoring report, R three point four involves citizenship. Dr. Engel?
Yeah, so this is part of our results monitoring policies that we've split up over the course of the school year. We don't want to do them all at once because the, the results of these kind of come up at various times, and the board wants to be informed in a timely fashion for some of this information. This is one that is certainly in development, and so Dr. Lucky will lead us through this one.
So first I'll say I feel awfully inadequate, there's only one hyperlink in this entire report. And I know that you're accustomed now to thirty-seven, so my apologies. The results policies are always a challenge. What, what I hear from the board is participation isn't enough, perception is not enough, it's the application of practice and learning. As I look to the wording of results policy three point four, it's practice good stewardship towards the environment. Practice. In working with our science teachers, we talked about what does that mean? These board reports don't come to you in isolation, it's always a group work to think about, how can we report to our community what we're doing? We decided to go with the gold standard. The gold standard is citizen science. If a term you may not be familiar with, and candidly, internally, it's a new term for us as well. But what it is, is the direct application of environmental stewardship. We have many activities in our school district that scaffold that build up to the citizen science gold standard. For example, we provide coursework starting in kindergarten on trees and weather, those are environmental units. We have high school courses, we have AP environmental science, we have science matters, we have a biotechnical education, yet those don't by themselves meet the definition of citizen science. We have clubs, we have hiking, we have fishing clubs, once again, don't meet the gold standard of citizen science. Neither do our supplemental activities. We do have school gardens in, in our elementary schools. We have Earth Day, we have activities. But what we're looking for is citizen science, and that's what we're reporting on tonight. It is the practice of participation and collaboration in scientific research specifically for environmental issues. So that what this means in practice is that our students learn to be researchers, they, and you have to collaborate with a third party. So we have an environmental school, but unless we bring in the D N R and build a research activity directly with them, that wouldn't be reflected in the numbers tonight. So I did, the hyperlink that does exist here is Tim Sprang worked with his science course, and he modeled a D N R animal tracking app. So students in his class track the patterns and numbers of different wildlife in our local area. That data then goes to the D N R, and it, it, it's throughout the whole state, and we get a complete picture of what it looks like in the state of Wisconsin. Another example of citizen science occurs when one of our students noticed that the city of La Crosse only updates the water hazard level near our beaches once a month. So they went and they worked with the city to come up with a way to have that water level, hazard level tracked weekly. That's empowerment, that's the research that citizen science is all about, and those are just two of the examples that we have here. Now, the one that's the eighty-five students in City of La Crosse, that's one of the assignments they have in that class, is that they have to come up with a project that they communicate with the city of La Crosse to troubleshoot, to make our local area better. That's aligned to the Wisconsin science standards. So instead of like, the old science standards that we had in the past, we talk about, let's, let's talk about water qual, or, or local, local ones would be, we would talk about French Island and the water issues on French Island, rather than just talking about waterways around the world and what that looks like. So that local focus of the curriculum and the standards is empowering to our students, and then be able to take it beyond the school walls. What's next for us in citizen science? Well, we got to get the word out, first of all, that, that this is a, a, a practice that we'll do that's aligned to our standards. We have to align our resources to it. And we have to look for those opportunities that already exist in our district. I mentioned Summit Elementary, I mentioned the, the school gardens. Those are prime opportunities to work with external stakeholders to build partnerships and relationships, to build research to improve the scientific knowledge in our area and, and globally. So that is citizen science. We did have four projects that included a number of students. I anticipate, once we get the word out, both internally and externally. So we want to build these partnerships with other organizations, and when they find that we're a willing partner, I anticipate this number will continue to grow year to year. Do you have any questions about results policy three point four?
Questions from the board?
I have one, and this is just in the context. So I tried to look back in our board docs, like search thing, to see if this was previously reported on. Is this the first report for this result?
Cycle two, I'll use the same indicators, but I'll also present, here's something that we're thinking about changing, and that would be the opportunity to maybe add to or, or get some feedback on what that looks like.
Okay.
I, I think, I think November or December is when we flip the calendar to the new, or the, the repeat, where you have seen these policies once before.
Okay. And then did you have like, or do you have like a goal idea of like how many students like would or could participate in this? Because the numbers are low, and I know that's because it's new and because of COVID and other reasons, but is there like, we're looking at increases every year, but is there something where you'd say, like, if we're meeting sixty percent of students getting this opportunity, we're doing good, or?
Right, well, I, I don't have a number, it's new, it's, it's, for schools, this is an, an area that's pretty common for schools to dive into. So we're, we're taking a pretty ambitious swing, I would say here, and it also is dependent on external partners. Like we can, we can offer up these activities, but we need a, a, a someone in the community. Or in the case of like the I Naturalists, we partnered with the Wisconsin D N R and also the California Academic, Academy of Sciences. So we have to really seek out some of these partnerships too. We are trying to build up, we're having the, the Wisconsin Science Teacher Convention. We're the host district for that in a couple of years, and that will be the, we're, we're going to build up to that particular event to be able to share what we've done with citizen science throughout the rest of the state. So where we're at at that point, that's what the goal would be, and then spread it to beyond the school district of La Crosse.
There would be a couple of different ways to approach those goals. We could think about trying to include a, a standard citizen science project in a course that's required by every student. And so then we would know that at some point in their career, they're going to engage in this activity. And so a metric we could say then is like a hundred percent of kids have had this opportunity and have completed a citizen science project. Another way to think about it, particularly at the elementary level where they're learning about science every year, is do we incorporate something at every grade level? So every year, we could say in kindergarten through eighth grade, every kid will engage in citizen science. Gets a little harder at the high school with schedules and, and the, the variation there, but those are some things we could think about. But I think we also want to keep the, the rigor high. You know, we don't want it to devolve just into environmental science learning, which we know we're already doing. We want it to really be the citizen science, this research that makes that high level. So trying to keep honest with that as well.
Right, yeah, because I thought, I thought about things like we could look at, like times that students went out in the community and recycled, right? That's good, it's, it's, it is practicing the environment, but we thought this gold standard would be something that the board would value. And it helps us increase the rigor of what we do science-wise in our, in our district as well.
So it sounds like we have a lot of flexibility in terms of the projects, right?
Oh, absolutely, yes.
So it makes me think that as we have moved into the monitoring phase of, of various policies.
as we have moved into the monitoring phase of various policies and if we have quite a lot of flexibility obviously in designing it, I mean, those kind of projects also can clearly overlap with other social justice related issues. And so I would be thoughtful about how you might combine some of that as well to, and be able to have some additional data for some of those other, another indicator perhaps for some of those policies.
Right. If I play out your idea a little bit, so the citizen science concept of research in the community attached to results policy 3.5 or 3.6, where it's that researcher engagement with the community in addition to what we currently have. Yeah? Right? Right. Citizen science does have some flexibility. It just needs a third party and you're doing research, right? I chose the ones that were environmentally focused, but there are other avenues too.
Other questions or comments?
Yeah, so also I think like an agency that you should definitely reach out to is Wisconsin Conservation Corps. They do a lot of this work that is just like this and they will be a really good contact to talk to.
They are. And we do partner with them a great deal. I referenced that in the report as somebody that's like, they provide lessons. They provide instructions. We go there often for field trips. It was the research component that didn't include them in, in the citizen science. So if we can get to the point of changing that relationship to add in the research component, then I would have them in as well. But they're great partners already.
Any other comments or questions? So just unofficially, is there, seems like there's consensus that we have reasonable progress in our 3.4. Is there anybody who feels otherwise? Hearing nothing. Thank you very much, Dr. Lahaki. We will move on to the 2021-2022 Proposed Budget Plan. Dr. Engel?
So this item is an element of monitoring for OE 5. And once again, we want to do this in a time sensitive manner. There's also state laws that dictate the development and approval of budgets for schools. In this case, State Statute 65, 60 parentheses four stipulates the board will approve a preliminary budget and hold a budget hearing. And State Statute 120.123 stipulates it is the school board's responsibility to tax for operation and maintenance and set the annual levy. For some context, the board looks at items of importance twice if possible for making final decisions. The preliminary budget is presented for information today and will be considered for approval at the next meeting on October 4th in advance of the budget hearing on October 8th. And Ms. Sprang will certainly go through our budget development timeline. But this is one of those things that it's the board's responsibility to do annually. And so there's a lot to look at today after we've already seen a lot, but this is really good stuff. So hopefully hold on to your seats. With that, I'll turn it over to Patty.
There is a lot of this we've seen already as we've introduced it to you through the budget line, timeline. So this, Dr. Engels, right, this is the first time of four times that you will see this document. Right now it's very preliminary, but it is our first step. So I'm going to take you down to the page three. And that is our proposed budget introduction. And this talks about the budget as a whole, what we are supporting, the instructional program that we just heard all about tonight is the main purpose of the, of the school budget. And it's very preliminary because we just had Third Friday count last Friday. So we're in the process of tabulating those numbers. We don't have the property value that will come out October 1st. We do not have the equalization aid amount. It's October 15th plus our private school voucher amounts and transfer service. All of those pieces of information will be coming. And then when you approve the final budget in October, you will, this will, information will all be updated for that. So this just talks about again, our revenue limit. We are bound to a revenue limit which is made up of state taxes and, I'm sorry, state aid and local taxes. And the state budget also gave us no extras per pupil dollars. So our revenue limit is, are looking at only a $14,000 increase from last year. And that comes in very importantly, though even you heard that the state government gave more to state aid. That's a big pot of money distributed among the 400-plus school districts. And it's based on each individual school district, so we won't know that amount until October 15th.
No, this wouldn't be the ESR dollars in this case. So annually, the state gives money to schools. It changes every year kind of based on the composition of your school. It's a balance of enrollment and what your property value is and poverty. It's so complicated, nobody tries to figure it out at this point. But it goes into that black box and it spits out a number to us October 15th. So we find out what our state allocation is at that time. Generally speaking, if you have, you know, low property value per student, so it would look like there's not a lot of value in the district property value in the district, you'll get more aid. If you have high property value per student, you'll get very little aid. So as an example, like Monaca, that area with all the lakes and the forest land, high property value around all those lakes, they get very little state aid, maybe none. And then there's school districts, you know, like Ladysmith. You know, there's not a lot of industry up there. There's not a lot of tourism in that particular section of the state. They get a ton of state aid as a result to make up for the lack of tax base. And the idea is to kind of offset the burden to taxpayers. So in this case, the equalized aid is, you know, what we'll get from the state this year.
So this, this section just goes on further to describe that the preliminary budget, it's based on a three-year average of declining enrollment and we policies are stated in the board. You've seen that before. Also included is the strategic plan for educational equity. And then we come to, people will be able to open those links and see the detail. But the state funding for the K-12 education, we had gone over that previously in early August. That is our levels of aid on our general school aids. That is what Dr. Engel was talking about. And then the categorical aids are over and above. That would be your special ed aid. Then the school levy and first dollar credits are not given directly to the schools, although they are under the education umbrella in the state budget. They are there to give taxpayers relief. And then the state resident schools, they have some, a little bit of a increase over the previous biennium budget. Also the school levy credits, those are for, they do not change for the next two years. And then the statewide voucher program, those are the amounts that we will give to the private schools for students that are in our residence. We don't know that yet.
Yeah, something to highlight there. For students that go to the private school in our community, we levy our taxpayers for those dollars and then pay the private schools in our school district for their enrollment. And do you have any, what's the approximate amount per student? It differs by age level, but?
It does differ by age level. We have it right here, the grades K through eight, it's 8,401. 9,047 for grades nine through 12 in special education is very important, 13,078. However, like last year, it was over 1.2 million dollars of voucher dollars.
So local taxpayers paid for private school tuition to the tune of over a million dollars last year. So that's just something to keep in mind.
Well, and also there's any extra money for special ed programming that they don't provide.
Correct. So we still have to provide the special ed programming on top of those dollars. So the revenue limit, this is where we talk again about the revenue limit. Minus that equalized aid equals the local taxpayers. And so the revenue limit does not increase our, well, the state aid does not increase our capacity for programs or anything like that. It just offsets the revenue limit as a whole. Then I would also point out on the bottom part that this can be very confusing also, that those two definitions, the student membership is actually what our revenue limit is based on and also our equalization aid. And that is an FTE, whereas the student enrollment are the actual students in our seats. And that could be students from other districts. So the student enrollment is what we base our staffing on and our facility needs. But the student membership is what we are aided on, meaning any resident of La Crosse students, whether they attend here or they attend in another district. The revenue limit increase history, as you can see that for the new budget, there was no per pupil increase. So the La Crosse amount, the actual change was only $8.79. This equates into like 1.6 million dollars of a declining enrollment exemption. So that's because it's based on that three-year average that districts that are experiencing declining enrollment are not getting that full impact in one year.
Yeah, I'd just like to highlight that again. So we're losing money because we have fewer students. The state knows that that would be damaging if you lost all that at once and that you need a little bit of time to plan for that. So we get an exemption the first year that that happens. We don't have to lose all that money. They'll give us a little bit extra to cover the difference. But in the second year, that goes away. And so as you have declining enrollment, you lose money, but it's delayed by a year. It gives us a little bit of time to plan. So it's really nice, you know, when we can stop that loss wherever possible. So if our enrollment stays high this year and it limits how much we are declining, then we won't lose as much money next year. We're given one year to figure it out, but then we have to pay the piper, so to speak. So that's just something to keep in mind too. Thank you, Pat.
And then the referendum history, of course, the capital referendum is when we go out for approved debt. And then an operating referendum does not increase our debt. It just increases our revenue limit so that we can do some operating things, the technology, one-to-one initiative, things like that. So the referendum history, that has not changed. We did refinance that Northside Elementary loan in the last year, which is saving us over a million dollars in interest over the life of the loan. Enrollment history by level, again, there are, is, that is the kids in the seats and we are looking at a estimated decrease of 163 kids in the seats. Enrollment history, Third Friday September count, of course, this is last year's numbers. And so this will be updated for October, where you will be able to see the gains or losses by each level of our instruction and by school. Open enrollment history, Third Friday count, of course, that is an estimate. Nope, that is actually last year, so that'll be updated for 2021-22 after Third Friday. Open enrollment history, Third Friday, that is last year's numbers. We lost 66 through open enrollment. So as, as you can see over the years, the virtuals, schools have been more popular. So we are hoping that with our CRVA school that we will get some of those students back that maybe had gone elsewhere for virtual. Third Friday class size counting averages, so the orange would be the highest class size and the blue would be the lowest class size for that year. So as you can see, over the years, part of the declining enrollment has been that we've graduated large senior classes, but our incoming kindergarten classes have been relatively smaller. The school level enrollment history and projections, this is based on that applied science study that we just had done last November and we had gone through. They have a very grim outlook for us, but we usually do these every few years because after five years, they're really not worth the information. And another graph that shows a steep decline, which we hope to avoid. On the page, let's see, is it 29, that has the UW Extension Applied Population Laboratory. So this is the latest projections on all of these different ways that they do it. And then once we know what our count is, we will put that information in here for our finals so that you can see how off or how close we are at any one of these projections. They projected very high losses for 21-22. We do not have that same forecast. Staffing enrollment as a Third Friday enrollment count, so this was last year. And the next one is Personnel Summary, which Mr. Wenthe had brought to you back in August. This will be updated again because we base our Personnel Summary on Third Friday, just like we do with our student count. So now it'll be updated for October. See, this isn't so bad. You've seen a lot of it before. But then here we go into the introduction to financial detail on page 36. And so first we go into just the description of all the funds that are available to a school district. And we have to separate out certain expenditures into each of these different funds. However, Funds 10 through 29 are considered the operating funds and this is what the numbers that you will see in the next area will cover.
I would just add that we face a lot of state and federal scrutiny around our budgets and how we spend our money. And for that reason, there is lots of specificity to our budgets, including all these different types of funds. We have to carefully, carefully keep track of every penny. And we have an audit every year that comes through and looks at how we spent all these funds. We get probably monthly updates from the Department of Public Instruction about new codes and project codes and things that we have to use. And so it does look complicated. It is complicated. But it is so that we can meet the accountability requirements for the use of our funds. And after a decade, I get better at navigating it, so.
So, right, so on, let's see, page 38, I believe, it just talks about the revenues for Funds 10 through 29. And that I point out that the, the estimates that we are using, the operating budget is estimated to account for 42.5 million of that amount. And the operating portion of the tax levy is projected to actually stay quite level. Then the, also the levy, of course, like I said earlier, is just an estimate at this time to the best of our ability. For the equalized property value, we're estimating an 8% increase so for this district. So that, that's substantial. And that means that there's more, more tax base to spread the levy across. So that is something that we're really watching to see if that happens. Let's see. So on the next page, I think it's easier to, oh, wait a minute. Before we do that, I wanted to just point out and talk to Mr. Spivey too, to point out the federal grants and aids, where it has approximately 3.9 million of this budget is going to be contributed to the ESR 2 funds. So we spent the ESR 1 funds pretty much in, in last year, ESR 2 funds this year. And so our operating revenues, our chart, it kind of gives you a nice, um, picture of local taxes and state aid make up the majority of our revenue. And then we have revenue that comes in from state grants, uh, federal grants and aid, interest, and state categorical aid. Any questions on that? So then, uh, we, we come down actually to our operating revenues. So we have the actual for two thousand nineteen, twenty. We have twenty-twenty-one, the budget and un-audited, and then the proposed budget, uh, by level of what we expect for revenues. Then later on, you will see this on, um, like a monthly basis, and then quarterly we'll go over that, so you can compare the actual budget to the, um, expenditures, see where we're at. At this time, there are some differences you might see as far as revenues on the fees, admissions, rentals, sales. A lot of that last year was when we had our, our device refresh and we sold some of the, uh, devices. So we had a lot more, uh, revenue in that area than we estimate for this year. And also, let's see, oh, in fund, uh, let's see, state, two, 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 the interest, local grants, miscellaneous local revenue, that is, is much higher as far as what we are budgeting compared to what we brought in. But you can see the budget is comparable to the prior years. So that's, last year was such a different year for expenditures. However, we're budgeting for a year that, that's more normal. And so it's very comparative to, uh, prior, uh, budgets, prior year budgets.
That's something I'm always, like, we talked about the equalized aid, you know, so thirty-three percent of our budget comes from equalized aid. But then there's also other state aid that comes from categorical. It's either per pupil, you know, for every kid that's in a seat, we might get a hundred bucks, say, or for every student, you know, for students in special education, we get reimbursed for some of their expenses as well. Um, you know, when you add it all up, you know, about forty-two percent of our funding comes from the state directly, about forty-two comes from local taxes, and the rest, you know, that sixteen percent comes from federal or other sources. You know, so we're aided pretty well relative to our peers, probably, I don't know, would you say, average, Ms. Spring, as far as equalized aid relative to state local, state or local taxes?
Yes, I would. Uh, you know, that we are, you know, we look like a property rich, uh, so we're not aided on the tertiary level. So that, that's, uh, part of that complexity of the equalization aid. But, um, a lot of our aid is based on the fact that we do have a high percentage of, uh, of poverty. So, uh, the other thing I would point out to you on the federal aids is the nine million dollars budgeted, and that does include that three point nine million dollars of Esser Two funding.
Thank you.
So the operating budget summary expenditures by program, this is by function or purpose. And so we break these down into instructional, instructional support, district and business services, which includes transportation, facilities, uh, building administration, general administration, non-employee insurance, and other. And that is also shown on the, uh, chart very well, that the biggest chunks are instruction and instructional support. Of course, you would expect that as we are in instructional facility. Uh, and then to our operating expenditures are broken down by program. Again, the, the three years for comparison, let me see if there's anything I wanted to point out to you here. Just the, the, um, Esser dollars, we would see an increase in, uh, staff development, site plans, assessment, and instructional supervision and other instructional support. Those, those show where those Esser dollars are going to, um, directly or indirectly to instruction. Um, and, let's see. And I would point out in the building area, the building operations and maintenance, and last year, the expenditure of eleven million includes our portion of the Hamilton School update, uh, yeah, update or renovation. Any questions on the expenditures by function?
I have a question. So on, under the general admin and the building admin, is that where administrative staff, like, um, Dr. Engel, is he, is he and his staff in that area? Or which, what area are they in?
General administration.
General admin?
Legal and, and Board of Education.
Okay.
And the, and I will have to say this, that this year, we approached our budget a little differently. Um, we approached it by zero-based budgeting, starting out with zero and building it upwards. And that was the first year we've done that. So you're going to see a shift of some, uh, budget dollars from category to category because there might have been an expenditure that was paid out of one budget, but it really would have been more appropriate for the, to be, uh, paid out of a school budget. So, so we moved some dollars around, although our total pot of dollars didn't really grow. So, um, that was a really good approach. We were able to also give, um, raises, uh, according to the CPI. We are honoring credit movements for teachers. And, um, what else do we have? Oh, we had zero increase in, uh, health insurance and dental insurance rates. And, uh, that all kind of played into us presenting, it can't tell from here, but when we look at the other published budget, you'll see that we are proposing this year, to the best of our ability, a, a balanced budget. So then we go on to the same, these are the same expenditures, but they're presented in different, a little differently. They're by object. So compensation, purchase services, our consumables, equipment and rentals, and then other. So if you look at the big picture, you can see, of course, compensation is a good portion, meaning our, um, salaries and benefits, because we are, uh, service industry and we are made up of people. So the next section, I think we're just going to skip by it because it's all about the facility, uh, plan and history. And Mr. Lavina did a great job of presenting that to you during the summer. Uh, it could have been even earlier than that. So please review at your leisure. Um, then we will go to the community service fund levy. And that is on page sixty. So we go into a narrative and we talk about each of the areas that we support through the levy. And we did some adjustments as far as our description with the, um, SRO, since we've, um, kind of redesigned it to, um, to serve the public and private schools and with much consideration. But I also wanted to point out that when we tax in any of these areas, we need to always spend it in that area. So back in two thousand nineteen, twenty, as you can see, our levy was much higher than it had, was last year and this year. And that's because of COVID and not spending in those areas where we had already taxed. So last year, we were able to use some of those unused funds from, um, nineteen, twenty, last year. And then we still have a little bit of that left, so we have to increase our levies slightly. But, um, our areas are still using some of those past funds, uh, to meet the program needs. Do you have any questions? Now, this is just the levy. This is not the budget for funding, okay? Any questions there? So then we come back to our fund summary, because this is, these are all the funds. And then if you could go to, let's see, what page this is, page sixty-three. So this shows all, all beyond our operating funds, beyond fund ten through fund twenty-nine. And it goes into our debt. It also goes into our capital expansion fund, our food service, and then the community service. And so you can see that the revenues and expenditures for community service, um, are, as a whole, the budget is much more than what we're taxing for. And part of that is, as you can see, the revenues are higher than what we are taxing, is because in that fund eighty is also our pantries, our, our, our food pantries within our schools, which we get thousands of dollars of donations for, but they are used for benefit of the community. So we keep that here. So those are, um, things we don't tax for, but they're in there. Any questions on any of those funds?
Another anomaly you'll always see is fund ten and fund twenty-seven. If you look there in that last column, the, the fund ten is about, you know, just over ten thousand dollars higher in revenues than expenditures. And then fund twenty-seven, you'll notice has the exact opposite situation, where the expenditures are about ten thousand dollars higher than revenues. And this is because much of our expenses were required to spend out of fund ten and, and then do a balance transfer at the end of the year to fund twenty-seven. It's an accounting gimmick, but we need to make sure that we represent it properly in order to get aided correctly from the state for those funds.
Right. So when, again, when you see the published budget, you're going to see that, that revenues of, uh, eighty-six million will be the same as the expenditures, and that will be a balanced budget. But we're really transferring dollars to fund twenty-seven to cover the deficit there. So revenue limits, state aid, and total levy impact. This is, this is, again, very preliminary. So we're looking at the revenue limit, um, being very comparable to what it was last year. The state aid up a little bit than last year. Um, and then the breakdown of the state aid and the local taxes. Uh, so the state paying that three-fourths of the budget isn't quite there yet. And then total levy, and the change in the levy, um, as you can see, is increased. I should have pointed that out on the prior page, that fund thirty-nine debt. We have an opportunity to strategically, uh, pay some debt in order for the, um, when it, when it falls off and working with our plan for a capital referendum. So the, although the total levy is up, the mill rate is about the same because our property value has increased. So that is what we are, are working on. So those numbers will change, of course, for the final, uh, book. And then the tax levy components. So this is what's making up that tax levy. As you can see, the increase in the debt levy is what I am talking about as far as strategically, uh, reworking our debt.
So with this proposed budget, the value of your house didn't change. Your taxes should be the same, if not a little bit less than, than last year. Problem is sometimes the tax assessor comes through and adds on thirty thousand dollars of value, and now you gotta pay a little bit more in taxes. And that's always frustrating for folks to understand. You said the taxes weren't going up. Like, I know, but you've got more house now, and you're better off, so.
So at this point, we're going to say, if your taxes went up, it wasn't because of the school district. So that's, that's always one thing that's very important. Um, and then the school levy credits, of course, this will be updated, uh, for the October meeting. And it'll, it'll be updated for twenty-twenty-one's numbers, uh, because, of course, the other municipalities are on a calendar year, based as we are on a fiscal year. And then equalized value history, that will be updated also for twenty-one, twenty-two, because that'll be based on the tax breakdown between the levies. So all of this information is, uh, following is actually last year's, uh, breakdown. We will update that for you as we come to our next, uh, well, until the end of October. So what, what questions might you have?
Any questions, Ms. Spring? There you go. Thank you, Ms. Spring.
Okay. And so you should expect to see the published, uh, format in the paper, actually the Sunday before you are approving this. It's kind of a timeline that we have to have it published fifteen days before the budget hearing. So it kind of works out that way. All right? And if you haven't, if you come up with any questions, don't hesitate to give me a call or, or Dr. Engel, and we will get you some answers.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll move on to our announcements, and we'll move to Ms. Bowman.
Uh, we met on the first, we went over the vouchers and the financials like we always do, and we approved the personnel contracts. And then, um, we went over the administrator's report, where they had back-to-school staff meetings, they had the paraprofessional, um, get-together for training and getting ready for, they had their first, uh, superintendent's meeting. So they're doing both virtual and in-person now, so that's kind of nice. And just about DPI and the Esser funds, an update. So that was kind of like this, right?
Yeah.
That would be it.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to Ms. Baumann for the La Crosse Public Education Foundation update.
Yes, and I have quite a few things to share. Um, I'll lead with the big announcement first. And this is the first time we've had a board meeting since the news was released. So, um, Executive Director David Stuffler is moving on to a new opportunity outside of our school district. Um, it looks like he's going to Springfield, Missouri. Um, so I wanted to take a little bit of time to highlight some of the things that he's accomplished while he's been here, um, working with our, uh, school district and impacting teachers and students. Um, over his seven years, the LPEF has increased overall visibility, um, which includes community awareness of LPEF and its mission, including events like Bank a Teacher Day, um, and recognition for retiring educators. Um, under David's watch, we've more than doubled the regular annual impact of LPEF financial support for the school district of La Crosse. We have doubled the amount of grant funding made available to teachers and schools. We've increased the availability of the Random Acts of Kindness spending, um, from an average of less than twenty-three thousand to an average of thirty-four thousand. Uh, we've doubled the number of endowment and major funds supporting LPEF. We've helped lead the largest ever fundraising campaign in LPEF history, um, with the completion of the five hundred thousand dollar campaign for the Random Acts of Kindness Forever Fund. And, um, David has built a strong, financially healthy organization headed by a dedicated Board of Directors. So his, um, position, I believe, is through the end of September. And, oops, the Board is actively seeking applications. The deadline to apply is, was September seventeenth. It's now October first. Um, if you see David around, please thank him for his service to our district. Uh, we've also, uh, the LPEF hosted the ninth Charlie Miller Bowtie Classic Golf outing on September fourth. Um, they raised about thirty-three thousand dollars after expenses. Um, and the first place team won five hundred dollars for Northwoods. And we have a new endowment fund available for teachers. And this was established by retired School District of La Crosse Superintendent Randy Nelson and his wife Lynn Nelson, who's also a retired educator. Uh, this fund, um, specifically is funded through the Gold Star Grants, um, and it supports physical education, physical fitness, servant leadership, and character development. And that's all I have for now.
Well, thank you very much. Uh, for my announcements, just a reminder that the Wisconsin Association of School Boards Region Six meeting is actually in our backyard and not Alaska. So if anybody's interested in attending, please let, uh, So if anybody's interested in attending, please let Laura Sagerwald know, uh, so that we can make sure that you are registered. And I'll turn it over to Superintendent Engel.
Um, we're continuing to focus on transportation issues. We're meeting weekly with their, um, executive-level folks. And so we intend to have some resolutions soon. Um, we're definitely keeping our eye on that issue and helping, uh, do everything we can on our end to alleviate the bus driver shortages that there are. Uh, it has made some impacts on athletics in particular and extracurricular events, which we know is devastating to kids and families who've been missing that and looking forward to those things. So we're doing our best to reschedule and make accommodations there.
Do you have to have a special license to drive a bus?
You need a C D L license of a particular category to drive a bus. I heard in some places they're getting firefighters to drive buses. I think that would be awesome, but, um, no, but we are, um, examining, you know, rapid training programs and other things for folks that are interested in helping out. Uh, looking at, uh, school staff who might have time in their schedule and an interest in making a little money on the side. Um, you know, we're going to throw everything we can on our end to help alleviate that bus driver shortage, uh, including looking at things like, uh, bell schedules, start times, end times. Um, you know, we know that some of that is a burden on families, but getting to school is also a burden on families right now. So we're going to do everything we can on our end to be flexible and accommodating to make it happen.
Do all school districts contract out or are there some school districts that run their own bus service?
Um, some own their own bus service. When I was in Gaal Electric Trumpolo, we owned our own bus service, you know. We, then you directly bear the burdens, you know, but you also may have some flexibilities as well, you know. So as we move through this relationship, we'll evaluate further, you know, those next steps depending on how things go. Uh, but yeah, there are pros and cons to each. Um, I've worked with school districts that have done both. And, um, it kind of depends on which pros and which cons you want to take on. So, uh, yeah. Uh, as it relates to COVID protocols and things, you know, we still have masking in place, case rates are relatively high. Um, we have found that when we're wearing masks and three feet apart, we don't have spread at school. You know, where we've had kind of egregious failures of those sorts of things, we've seen a little bit of spread. So we know that this is working for right now. Uh, highly reassured by, um, Pfizer's indication that the vaccine for five-through-eleven-year-olds may be available as soon as October with FDA approval. That will drastically change our situation in our schools, quickly elevating the rate of the vaccinated population in our school district as a whole and allowing us a little more freedom and flexibility, um, with masks, with social distancing, because we'll be able to do that safely, more safely with kids. So very excited about that development. We're already working with the county and our health systems to look at vaccine clinics and other things to get the infrastructure set up so that as soon as that date comes along, we can be ready to help parents get access to vaccines if they choose, if that's right for their student. Those are the big updates for me.
Great, thank you, Dr. Engel. We'll move on to agenda planning for October fourth, twenty twenty-one Board of Education meeting.
I'll make the motion to approve the October fourth, twenty twenty-one Board of Education agenda with any additions or corrections.
Second?
So the motion by Mr. Corburg and second by Ms. Como is to approve the October fourth, twenty twenty-one Board of Education agenda with any additions or corrections, any additions or corrections from the Board?
Um, I would like to bring up, I think, maybe a few months ago, I'd asked about, um, wanting to get an update on the community school, um, initiative, uh, and kind of how they've handled with the COVID situation and things like that. So I think I would like that to be added and possibly, um, an update on the equity plan if there is one.
Okay. We will look for those. And so all those in favor of approving, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Motion has carried, and then we'll move on to the Board debriefing.
Thank you, Mr. Navas. Uh, first thing I would comment on in terms of what I thought we did really well tonight is I thought there were a lot of really good questions from a variety of Board members. And there were good questions that helped to clarify things for, for the Board, and so I appreciated that. Um, two things I think we need to think about, and the first one is one that I've brought up before. So I really think we need to wrestle with this as, as a Board. But the, the, the good thing about having all of the reports come forward first, obviously, as an information item, is for us to kind of see what these, you know, what these, um, and, you know, the, the measurement of these indicators and ask questions and clarification. And I know in some of these discussions at times, so earlier this evening, for example, Ms. Como sort of asked for, you know, why certain information wasn't, wasn't, you know, included was a great question. And you said, yes, well, I can just add that. I do think the Board needs to wrestle with how we want to proceed with that going forward. So do we want to keep it as an informal process and just any Board member can ask for something and then that happens? Um, or do we need some kind of process by which the Board weighs in on whether or not that's, that, there's agreement, we should, we should do that? In the case of what Ms. Como asked for, I don't think there probably would have been any issue with a, with a, a Board member having a, a problem with that. And I think if so, probably someone would have spoke up. But I do believe there will probably come a time where someone asks for a correction or something to be added or whatnot that we may disagree with. And we just need a process, I think, in terms of how that might be handled. Um, and again, if it's just anybody can make a request and that happens, we, we just need to, as a Board, say, that's okay? Or say that's not okay. And so in the case, for example, if, um, if, if, if Ms. Como asked about something to be added, that we have a moment where we either, I, I'm going to leave that to the Board to decide how best. And then the, the final thing, I would just have the Board think about it as well as, um, I'm sure I, like many other Board members, very pleased to see that we, um, now have a land recognition statement at the beginning of the meetings, which is then followed by the pledge of allegiance. So, um, you know, I got, you know, I have feelings about that. I'm sure I'm probably not the only one, and I think we just kind of need to sort of just have some thought about, about that. How did, how we want to do that piece or some just acknowledgement of that, that piece. Um, if I'm the only one who that came up for, I'm happy to acknowledge that. But if there are other Board members who also noted that, feel free to, okay. We do have a couple of Board members who noticed that as well, okay? And that's all I have for this evening.
Wonderful. All right. Then without objection, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Go, go Packers.